Before we start the meeting formally, firstly I'd like to thank you all for coming, and secondly, could I please ask you if you have any mobile phones to turn them off or preferably stand on, so that we don't have any interruption during filming or during the meeting. Thank you. I will start the meeting in one and a half minutes' time. Right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Notice is hereby given that a meeting with Pickering Town Council's planning committee will be held on the 4th of June 2018 at 7pm in the Memorial Hall, Otterhill, Pickering. And all members of the said committee are hereby summoned and required to attend to transact the business listed below. Number one, to receive apologies and approved reasons for absence, I believe there are none. To deal with any applications for dispensations from members of the committee. Do we have any? Thank you. And to approve the minutes of the meeting of the committee held on 3rd of April 2018. Do we approve the best seven minutes? Thank you. And fourthly, to allow members of the public to make representations, answer questions, and give evidence in respect of any item of business on the agenda, to provide an opportunity for presentations to be made by the committee. And I would remind the members of the public that all relevant comments and concerns are minuted by the clerk and will be passed on to the Ryehead District Council. Right, if anyone would like to speak to the committee, would you be so kind as to stand up please and say a piece of your thing? You, madam.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Graham, and I'm a resident, well, not a resident yet, but I have been an owner of property on Willow Court, and just want to speak for the planning application regarding Willow Court change of use. I've been an owner of the property for 22 years and would like to object to the planning application presented. A representative of the residents' association is also in attendance and advises me that many of the residents have similar concerns. The planning was granted in 1987 and refers to the building on covenanted land of 26 units of sheltered accommodation and associated facilities. The current accommodation is a two-bedroom first-floor flat with bathroom, kitchen, and living room. Historically, the property has been used as warden, live-work unit, providing housing, employment for a local family, a medically retired army veteran, a single-parent family returning to the area to support her elderly mother, and finally, a young lady in her first home, all providing support to vulnerable individuals where approximate age is over 80. Since 2017, the flat has been an office and residents have been offered the use as a meeting room. The access to the room is by a staircase without solid double banisters and there is no emergency equipment or useful assistance to provide emergency evacuation. Should one of the frail residents fall on the stairs, the access would be compromised and no pull codes exist to the stair top or bottom, thus the use would be contrary to and discriminatory within DDA guidelines. An ideal plan allows for an increase in sheltered accommodation in the area for which the flat could still be used. A change of use removes a family home from the housing stock and also reduces the requirement for assisting the local economy providing employment and encourages an out-of-town-visiting warden, thus contributing to environmental damage, traffic congestion, and negative local employment statistics. The long-term impact of the dilution of housing stock on this site of this nature would be inappropriate and not supportive to encouraging independent living in the elderly and disabled population. The planning application has a number of errors which can be backed up by outside documentation. Item three indicates that the change of use has not started. The accommodation has been reported as an office to residents and to Ryehead District Council for over two years, so the use of the office as a meeting room to some residents also negates the accuracy. Item five indicates no pre-application advice has been sought but reports at meetings of residents and to Ryehead District Council with accent representatives disavows this claim. There is no allocated parking for any of the residents, it's almost removed the garages in a different parking area, so the notation of one parking space is incorrect and reference should be made to the earlier drawings in the application. The application suggests the flat is not in a flood area, but personal experience and the Environmental Agency website designates this area as zones two and three. We would like to thank Pickering Town Council for supporting the flooding prevention that has happened. The removal of the live-work unit also reduces the security of the complex, which has in the past suffered from car fires and vandalism by individuals using the public right of way. The property is on covenanted land which restricts all manner of activities in addition to the flats and houses, including trading from the development. In summary, I would reiterate a request for refusal of this application.
Thank you. Do any of the committee wish to comment on that?
Well, obviously I've scribbled out the employer, not informally, but...
No, we'll come to informally later. Okay, thank you very much for that. Anyone else? You start.
Good evening. My name is Derek Vales, and I'm the spokesman for the Headside Residents' Association. I think that most of you are familiar with our group, but to recap, our membership includes residents on the Tate Estate, Whitby Road, and Ruffel Lane. It will come as no surprise then for you to hear that I intend to speak on the matter of the amendment to the David Wilson Homes Whitby Road planning application. Despite many serious concerns having been raised during the initial consultation, and even though six months have elapsed, we believe that this planning application remains deeply flawed. There's still no detail around the plan to safely store and manage surface water flows, indeed even the county council note in their consultation response that there is much work to do to fully convince them of the viability of David Wilson's ethereal engineering solution. Remember Woodlands Park, ladies and gentlemen, eight years on, still issues, and that's on a flat piece of land. The provision of pedestrian safety is still woefully inadequate. I imagine we will be able to count in weeks how long it takes for a motorist to plough through the proposed new pedestrian refuge. This set layout will ensure that even short local journeys will be made by car, ensuring that traffic congestion and pollution continue to escalate over the coming years. Look ahead in the ramp, it seems clear that the developer is unwilling to even work to a minimum compliance model. Instead, they strive to do the very best that they can possibly get away with. For example, the developer agrees that two-story houses built on rising ground above bungalows would constitute a lack of privacy and be overbear into the immediate outlook of existing residents. If you read no further than Paul Butler's covering notes, you might even be convinced that the applicant had designed out that issue, but instead, they have simply shuffled around a few bungalows and in doing so, they have transferred the problem of overlooking and loss of privacy to residents of Whitby Road. Even so, whilst doing that, they completely ignored the impact on residents on the eastern end of Marshall Drive, leaving those homes overlooked by some of the biggest houses on the proposed scheme. I want to now offer more examples of what we believe is limited compliance for even just ignoring people's concerns. Affordable homes, all bunched together, hidden active sites on the eastern border of the site, surely in the interests of social cohesion, these homes should be spread literally among the site. Doesn't developer really have the council over such a barrel that they can ride roughshod over the needs of our evolving community? Or is it really all about the numbers and be damned at the comfort, wellbeing, and social integration of the people who live in these houses? On the 4th of January this year, I and two other colleagues representing the residents' association attended a meeting with Gary Howson, and he was very clear that he had a number of concerns about the development and could not support this application unless there were a number of amendments. One, a substantial reduction in the number of houses proposed. Two, the need for more single-story dwellings. Three, affordable houses should be spread among the development and not all grouped together. Four, the size of the affordable homes are too small. To quote, 'It would be nice if the occupants could lie down in the bedrooms.' And five, the entrance was a major concern. None of the above appears in the revised plan. Okay, I'm almost done. I could go on, but you have the availability of both our original written representation and our submission relating to all the amendment plans. I trust that you will take these concerns into account as you formulate your response. Our report by highlighting Miss Council's objection to Percillan Homes Phase Two development at Firthland Road, the council recognising inadequate lack of provision for social and medical services within the town. You also highlighted our lack of traffic capacity. We share those concerns, which we must apply doubly to the larger development which is proposed by David Wilson Homes.
Thank you. Would any other member of the public wish to speak? No? Right, in which case, we will move on to the specifics. We start with the said planning application.
Sorry, I need to declare a party interest in this. I have a prejudiced interest on account of an ex-dos awareness of the details.
In which case, does he appreciate my harsh request that you leave the room?
Just don't leave it out there for two.
Try not to, because I know the rest of it goes on. We'll try not to forget you. Thank you. Right, the first one is the arrangement of 63 four-bedroom dwellings, 98 three-bedroom dwellings, 72 bedroom dwellings and one, and eight one-bedroom dwellings with associated garaging and parking amenity, areas, open space, landscaping, associated infrastructure, and formation of vehicular access on land at Whitby Road, the amended plans. And I would like to hereby remind the committee that the council has agreed that the site is suitable for housing, but we have a number of concerns about the original proposal. And we'll go through them, I've got five items here, and we will go through them. Obviously, all the points made by members of the public have been duly noted, and we have, I believe this is effectively what you read to us here, so we have that, and now...
Yeah, I don't think that's...
Oh, it's a different one.
I can give you a copy, I can give mine.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that would be useful actually, because this will all be forwarded in due course to the Ryehead District Council. Thank you very much. Right, the storage of surface water. Now then, let's go round the table on this. Joy, would you like to be...
Well, we haven't got all the information, I don't think we can actually discuss that.
We can't really, we have no idea of the capacity of this storage tank, and nobody has yet given us any information. It will certainly, I suspect, need to be substantial, but we just don't know.
And I think there is some questions that we need to ask. You mentioned it earlier in your opinion about the detention bay, the older ones, not that, I'm getting mixed up with...
That's the other one.
The other development.
The attenuation basin.
The attenuation basin, and where the rainfall would go from the southern boundary.
Yeah.
The road.
So that needs to be flagged up?
Yeah. That's a question to ask the planning committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, just on that, are they going to underground drainage from the southern part of the attenuation basin into the drainage tank? I don't know whether that's, if that's what they're planning, then that would alleviate some of the water falling onto the southern...
Yeah, that needs to be flagged up.
Whether the attenuation basin actually...
Yes, missus.
Not that, yes. Not that they mentioned, but the detention base and whether it should go to...
I presume you're aware of this, ladies and gentlemen, the panic, that we have received these photographs. Yeah, a further problem. Yeah, right.
Well, I mean, years ago, we used to have proper drainage systems put in before we built houses, and it wanted the drainage system that takes the water an awful lot further away than off our land. In fact, as I remember in Dallas, the first thing before I did an enormous building, I mean thousands and thousands, was put these enormous drains on the ground. You couldn't see anything on the surface, you could go past it, but we don't know best of it, they went through. And where they went, I don't know, but certainly an awful long way off the site.
So you would make the point that, yeah, before they start seriously building the house, they need to consider, not only consider, but construct, an efficient and capable drainage system? Yeah, thank you.
In engineering, it's quite possible to do the calculations to determine how much water is going to fall, what runoff is, what might a little bit be soaked in, to determine the size of any detention means. Obviously, so far, it seems that David Wilson Homes haven't bothered to do this, otherwise the county or the district would have the information, in fact, would have the copy and calculations. But as Stephen's just pointed out, this only addresses the new development, it doesn't do anything for the flooding problems that we've already got.
Right, so to put that in a way that would be of use to the district council and the developer, it needs really much further consideration, not only, as you say, for the estate, but for what already exists, and to make, hopefully if necessary, further allowance for it. And people do talk of global warming and unpredictable weather events.
And just this department hasn't given us much...
There's no past history.
Well, no, the past, the past history of it, and the site just further up the road that we're still waiting to get ownership of, where we haven't exactly filled with...
They have an unsatisfactory track record, should we say, yes. And I would suggest, I don't know what the rest of the committee feel, but we ought to at least have this sort of calculation based on a one-in-25 a year flood event, which is approximately what the flood, well, that's what the flood defences are designed to give us.
I don't know, I don't know, we can stick it like that, but if they can't stop flooding at the top of the hill, I don't know if they're going to...
Quite, yeah, okay.
I suspect that David Wilson Homes might just turn around and say that the existing problem should really be addressed by the option water, it's not their responsibility.
To be fair, you're probably right, and that has been a very unsatisfactory saga. Yeah, and it still is, it still needs final resolution.
I think the point is that we don't want the new development to act the existing project down.
Yeah, that's right. It must cope with anything that the development produces, possibly with a little extra margin, with a margin for error. Yeah, okay, thank you. Right, are we satisfied with that? Right, okay. Right, the movement of traffic to and from the proposed estate. Any comments, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, obviously, from the words in the reports, the amount of traffic coming along would be grossly underestimated.
Yes.
I don't know, could come on with sort of...
The survey was frankly inadequate. Yeah, so expressed deep concern about the extra traffic.
I'm just wondering if there's a case for traffic lights, actually.
That is, yeah, that's a thought.
I mean, there may be times when the amount of traffic leaving that estate would be no greater than the amount that comes past my door all the time from my car park. It's kind of very similar.
I mean, I completely agree that traffic lights there is the right, right thing, in that we've got traffic lights further down the road and we've got roundabout, and I think for the flow of traffic. I mean, yes, the island isn't ideal, but it's probably the best of the, best thing you can... The issue I have is that there's only one entrance and exit, but I think that's not necessarily what we're looking at, is it?
No, it's just the movement of traffic.
Yeah, so we could actually still reiterate the fact that the movement of traffic is purely going in and out of one entrance along with pedestrians, cyclists, and everything else, which isn't ideal. And it's going on to an A-road that's not quite opposite the old Whitby Road entrance as well. Yeah, yeah. And with cars using that road to get to and from Whitby and accessing and exiting the site, as well as children, adults, pedestrians, it is an accident waiting to happen.
What would the committee say, if we were to suggest that they erect one of those, what do they call it, a matrix? The device that flashes up your speed if you're going too fast? There are some on the way between here and Scarborough, on the 30 mile an hour limit. It says 'slow down' and reads your speed out to you in large, in large, unmistakable. If that were put just further north of the two entrances, like the current entrance from the existing estate and the proposed one, that would hope, I hope, potentially slow down traffic coming into town from the Whitby direction. They are quite, I don't know about anybody else's experiences, I find they're quite effective. You think you are doing 30, you're actually doing about 35, 36, and it tells you you are, you think, oh, no, you tend to slow down. I suggest they consider the installation of one of those, unless the committee has any viable...
We're talking about the movement of traffic, aren't we, now, with that junction?
Yeah. But that's going to expedite or improve movement in and out if traffic is slowing down coming from the northern direction. If we slow it down a bit, it's going to be, it's going to surely facilitate traffic getting in and out. If you're judging a car coming towards you when you need to come onto a main road...
It's coming slowly.
Yeah, if it's a bit slower, then that might help.
Well, I think anything to help it slow, slow.
Yeah.
I'm right proposing to suggest that.
Right, anybody else have got any comments on it apart from, okay, we said the sheer volume of it, the potential volume.
Yeah, I mean, I know that one of the residents did mention, you know, the pollution as well, but we have houses to build in the town, so anywhere is going to be awkward and is going to, to sort of, the number of cars and traffic on the road, so...
We'll come on in a minute, I've got that down.
Have they commented while they don't have an in-and-out, an in-gro, an e-gro, obviously a state, you've got different roads?
No, there's been no suggestion about that at all.
No.
In effect a one-way system, one in, one out, yeah.
Would just, I don't know whether...
Just split it.
There's no...
I think that's only this, perhaps that's available to the developer.
Yeah.
Anywhere else is built on, perhaps it's all along Whitby Road.
I suppose to do that would probably involve widening the road, I don't know.
Well, no, I mean, it would have been nice to have pedestrian access to the south or, you know, southwest, but because obviously people living in the southeast area have got to come all the way up to the top to go back down.
Yeah, but pedestrian...
But that's that pedestrian not breaking up.
Yeah, all right. Anything else on that? Thank you. Right, well, we've sort of come on to that, pedestrian crossing the A169 in for safety. Well, there is the traffic island, of course. Sorry, the pedestrian island in the middle. Anybody come in the comments on that?
Well, of course, I've got one outside my door, and so I use it continuously on the town. As a dodgy old man, it isn't 100% effective.
Yeah, so you're not considering this efficacy.
Crossing operated by lights of the pedestrian that operates.
I think that would be safer, that throws out the traffic lights again, yeah.
Obviously highways have looked at this, but I don't see whether the road's wide enough to have an island in the middle, because it's wider at the bottom where the roundabout is. And they obviously must have looked, but it doesn't seem really it's wide enough to have it around.
Yeah, John.
Slight observation, in Stephen's situation, the crossing there is very close to the roundabout, so traffic is slowing down considerably anyway, whereas at this island at the entrance, traffic is still doing 30 miles an hour plus, as measured by the police.
Yeah, that's a fair point, too.
I mean, when I did look at the plan and saw the footpath going north to the much-used bus stop, it would seem that that is the more sensible place to actually cross the road, but as we know at the roundabout, we have railings around the roundabout and people still choose to cross inside them rather than go and walk slightly at the road and cross where the traffic island is. So even if we sort of looked at putting something in possibly a bit further north of this site entrance, I don't think that would be used. I just think it's a very, but we're discussing this now, and highways have said they haven't got an issue with it, so as far as planning concerns at Ryehead, you know, we can throw this one about all night, and the experts have deemed it okay.
Can I ask you a question? How will you support to cross the road?
Careful.
It's very, very difficult now, as I say, this is a little bit dodgy, and it's not the same, it's a little difficult now, it is.
It's really frustrating, obviously, I live on Whitby Road.
I mean, something has had to be done, I've objected the whole estate, something couldn't be done as well.
It could be warning signage erected.
Well...
It might be.
At the brink, did they bring the path down on the left-hand side, on the eastern side of Whitby Road as well? They said they might extend it past...
Slightly down, it only goes, so it's about as far as the north it goes to the round, so it's not all the way down. They are widening, although it's...
So that would be down, that would be the first house possibly.
But for anybody attending the infant school, they've got to cross the road, walk down, and cross back again.
Yeah, okay. Right, we covered that, haven't we? Any other further comments? Right, well, Joy, you started on that just now, the issue of increased pollution at the roundabout, an inevitable result of what, 239 houses, most of which unfortunately will have cars, some will have two, some perhaps even three. It's a fact of life, there are going to be more cars around. Hopefully, more of them in the future will become electric, which will marginally reduce the pollution. How soon that's going to happen, I wouldn't like to say. And then whenever it already recharges their car at 5 o'clock at night, the National Grid will probably collapse, and all that's going to happen. However...
Well, can I ask you, some tests are done on air pollution now, where...
Yes, that's a good idea, yes. So pollution monitoring required at the roundabout, and over peak traffic periods, I would suggest. Okay. Right, that's really, I think, covered that, because regrettably, for all its problems, it is a fact of modern life, and we're going to have to try and live with it or ameliorate it as best we can. Right, the absence of effective landscape buffers on the southern and western boundaries. Well, any comments, anyone?
I think there's a lot of concern about the signs of, at least, I mean, it's been alluded to earlier, the two houses on the southern, well, the houses against bungalows are also to do with the landscape.
Yes, it's, sorry.
Yeah, come here.
I was going to say, it isn't, it's not a buffer as such, but as you quite rightly say, we are seriously concerned about two houses being built opposite bungalows and on slightly higher ground, thus destroying a lot of privacy. Really, it needs to be aligned entirely with bungalows on that southern boundary. That would be a significant improvement, and hopefully would reduce some of the concerns.
I suspect that this might be done deliberately to provoke a response, because it's quite unnecessary to have two-story properties in that position.
Yes, why they might want to be provocative, I don't know.
And I think this was also mentioned in the letters that were sent, and so, you know, Ryehead will be aware of this.
Yes, they have received several concerns about that, and they will receive more soon, so hopefully they will address that matter. Now then, any other comments on the buffers, on just the southern edge, we'll deal with that as we started with it.
Well, my understanding of the joint is there isn't a buffer...
I think there's more concern about the signs of, at least, I mean, it's been alluded to earlier, the two houses on the southern, well, the houses against bungalows, it's mostly to do with the landscape.
Yes, it's, sorry.
Yeah, no, come here.
Like I say, it isn't, it's not a buffer as such, but as you quite rightly say, we are seriously concerned about two houses being built opposite bungalows and on slightly higher ground, thus destroying a lot of privacy. Really, it needs to be aligned entirely with bungalows on that southern boundary, that would be significantly improved, and hopefully would reduce some of the concerns.
I suspect this might be done deliberately to provoke a response, because it's quite unnecessary to have two-story properties in those positions.
Yes, why they might want to be provocative, I don't know.
And I think this was also mentioned in the letters that were sent, and so Ryder will be aware of this.
Yes, they have received several concerns about that, and they will receive more, I assume, so hopefully they will address that matter. Now then, any other comments on the buffers, on just the southern edge, we'll deal with that as we started with it?
Well, my understanding of the joint is there isn't a buffer at all, it's just defence between the properties.
Yeah, I think you're right, there isn't anything worth the name. Vegetation, appropriate vegetation would perhaps be better, preferably, which...
Might be necessary to have a bung.
So, well, there we go, yeah, that's an interesting thought, I suspect...
That's what they had to do upon Whitby Road, isn't it? They created the bung between the houses and from the flood, the Woodlands Park, so in the land there, they may need to do a small...
Right, let us, yes, a small bung.
We obviously said we're concerned about the rain or waterfall in the south of the attenuation basin.